The legislature is back in session. Senators, you should all have copies, your folder of the copies of bills with the exception of Bill Number 20. They will bring it in as soon as they're being reproduced. So we're going to go, we're going to start then with Bill Number 1-33 LS. I'm going to have the clerk.
Bill Number 1-33 LS, as amended by the author and the Committee on Transportation, Infrastructure, Lands, Border Protection, Veterans Affairs and Procurement, and further amended on the floor. Sponsored by Judith T. Wampat EDD and TCADA, an act to transfer title of lot number 5397, Municipality of Mingin, Guam, to the University of Guam.
Roll call.
Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Uggan. Senator Uggan, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. I'm sorry. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, aye. Senator Espaldon. Senator Espaldon, aye. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Rispisho. Senator Rispisho, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, absent. Senator Siniklis. Senator Siniklis, aye. Senator Torres. Senator Torres, aye. Senator Underwood. Senator Underwood, aye. Speaker Wampat. Speaker Wampat, aye.
Madam Speaker?
Yes, Senator.
Yeah, thank you. I move that we excuse Senator Rodriguez from voting today.
On that motion, no objections. So are you. Thank you, Senator. Bill Number 1-33 LS received 14 yea votes and one excused absence. Bill Number 1-33 LS is duly passed by this body. Bill Number 4-33 LS.
Bill Number 4-33 LS, as amended by the Committee on Finance and Taxation, General Government Operations, and New Development, and further amended on the floor. Sponsored by Michael F. Q. Siniklis, an act to add new Section 6215 and 6215.1 to Article 2, Chapter 6, Title 4, Guam Code Annotated, relative to preventing the waiver of the public hearing requirement for bills proposing salary changes for elected officials and to requiring that any change in salary of elected officials take effect after a general election through the Guam Legislature has intervened.
Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Uggan. Senator Uggan, aye. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Espaldon. Senator Espaldon, aye. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Rispisho. Senator Rispisho, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, excused. Senator Siniklis. Senator Siniklis, aye. Senator Torres. Senator Torres, aye. Senator Underwood. Senator Underwood, aye. Speaker Wampat. Speaker Wampat, aye.
Bill Number 4-33 LS received 14 yea votes and one excused absence. Bill Number 4-33 LS is duly passed by this body. Bill Number 6-33 COR.
Bill Number 6-33 COR, as amended by the Committee on Rules, sponsored by BG Rodriguez Jr., an act to amend Section 58146.1 of Chapter 58, Title 12, Guam Code Annotated, to provide for the development of proposed industry. An act to amend Section 58146.1 of Chapter 58, Title 12, Guam Code Annotated, as amended by Section 3 of Public Law 32-233, relative to providing for the development of proposed industry, specific policy, criteria, and measurable goals of the qualifying certificate program.
Roll call. Senator Richard, I mean, Senator Frank.
Just to make sure that it's clear, it's added as opposed to amended?
Asked added by Section 3. Is that what you have there? Clerk?
Asked added.
Asked added.
Asked added.
Please make sure that the title of those read correctly. Roll call.
Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Uggan. Senator Uggan, aye. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Espaldon. Senator Espaldon, aye. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Rispisho. Senator Rispisho, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, excused. Senator Siniklis. Senator Siniklis, pass. Senator Torres. Senator Torres, aye. Senator Underwood. Senator Underwood, aye. Speaker Wampat.
I'm good.
Senator Siniklis, aye.
Bill Number 6-33 COR received 14 yea votes and one excused absence. Bill Number 6-33 COR is duly passed by this body. Bill Number 19-33 COR.
Bill Number 19-33 COR, as amended by the Committee on Higher Education, Culture, Public Library, and Women's Affairs, and further amended on the floor. Introduced by T.R. Munia Barnes, an act to add a new Section 852F3 of Chapter 8, Article 2 of Title 1, Guam Code Annotated, relative to arts and buildings and facilities.
Roll call.
Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Uggan. Senator Uggan, aye. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Espaldon. Senator Espaldon, aye. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Rispisho. Senator Rispisho, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, excused. Senator Siniklis. Senator Siniklis, aye. Senator Torres. Senator Torres, aye. Senator Underwood. Senator Underwood, aye. Speaker Wampat.
I'm good. Bill Number 19-33 COR received 14 yea votes and one excused absence. Bill Number 19-33 COR is duly passed by this body. Bill Number 20-33 COR.
Bill Number 22.
20. Yeah, they just delivered it. You didn't get a copy? Can you please?
Bill Number 20-33 COR, as amended on the floor. Introduced by TCADA and BJF Cruz, an act to amend Sections 5425, 5426, 5427, 5450, 5452, 5480, 5481, and 5485 A and B of Article 9, and amend Sections 5703, 5705, 5706B, 5707A, and 5708, and add a new Section 5710 to Article 12, all of Chapter 5, Title 5, Guam Code Annotated, relative to legal and contractual remedies in Guam procurement law.
Roll call.
Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Tony Ada, nay. Senator Uggan. Senator Uggan, aye. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, nay. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Espaldon. Senator Espaldon, pass. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, pass. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, pass. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, pass. Senator Rispisho. Senator Rispisho, nay. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, excused. Senator Siniklis. Senator Siniklis, aye. Senator Torres. Senator Torres, aye. Senator Underwood. Senator Underwood, aye. Speaker Wampat.
I'm good.
Speaker Wampat, aye. Senator Espaldon, pass. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, pass. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, nay. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Espaldon, aye. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, nay. Senator Munia Barnes.
Bill Number 20-33 COR received nine yea votes, five nay votes, one excused absence. Bill Number 20-33 is duly passed by this body. Bill Number 22-33 COR.
Bill Number 22-33 COR, as corrected by the prime sponsor, substituted by the Committee on Appropriations and Adjudication, further substituted on the floor and amended in the Committee of the Whole. Introduced by BJF Cruz, an act to add a new Section 5 to Chapter 14 of Public Law 32-181, relative to authorizing Imegalohin Guam's transfer authority from the Public Safety Vacancy Pool Cost Account to comply with the United States District Court of Guam order dated January 16, 2015, in civil case number 91-00020, to authorizing the Attorney General of Guam to procure experts to assist in complying with the same, to authorizing the General Services Agency to procure discounted medicine on behalf of the Department of Corrections, and to requiring the Director of the Department of Corrections to report to the Speaker of the Lihis Leturang Guam on matters relative to civil case number 91-00020.
Roll call.
Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Uggan. Senator Uggan, aye. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Espaldon. Senator Espaldon, aye. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Rispisho. Senator Rispisho, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, excused. Senator Siniklis. Senator Siniklis, aye. Senator Torres. Senator Torres, aye. Senator Underwood. Senator Underwood, aye. Speaker Wampat.
Bill Number 22-33 COR received 14 yea votes, one excused absence. Bill Number 22-33 COR is duly passed. Bill Number 28-33 COR.
Bill Number 28-33 COR, as amended by the Committee on the Guam-U.S. Military Relocation, Public Safety, and Judiciary, introduced by Frank B. Uggan Jr., an act to amend Section 2 of Public Law Number 26-100, relative to removing the time restriction for the Guam Police Department Headquarters Administrative and Other Agency Sections to occupy government-owned facilities at TZAN.
Roll call.
Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Uggan. Senator Uggan, aye. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Espaldon. Senator Espaldon, aye. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Rispisho. Senator Rispisho, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, excused. Senator Siniklis. Senator Siniklis, aye. Senator Torres. Senator Torres, aye. Senator Underwood. Senator Underwood, aye. Speaker Wampat.
Bill Number 28-33 COR received 14 yea votes and one excused absence. Bill Number 28-33 COR is duly passed by this body. Bill Number 35-33 COR.
Bill Number 35-33 COR, as corrected by the prime sponsor, substituted by the Committee on Early Learning, Juvenile Justice, Public Education, and First Generation Initiatives, and further substituted and amended in the Committee of the Whole. Introduced by NB Underwood, Ph.D., Judith T. Wampat, EDD, and RJ Rispisho, an act to add a new Chapter 14 to Division 2, Title 17, Guam Code Annotated, relative to creating the First Generation Trust Fund Initiative in support of public high school graduates obtaining post-secondary education.
Roll call.
Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Uggan. Senator Uggan, aye. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, pass. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Espaldon. Senator Espaldon, pass. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, pass. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Rispisho. Senator Rispisho, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, excused. Senator Siniklis. Senator Siniklis, aye. Senator Torres. Senator Torres, aye. Senator Underwood. Senator Underwood, aye. Speaker Wampat.
I'm good.
Speaker Wampat, aye. Senator Blas, pass. Senator Espaldon. Senator Espaldon, pass. Senator McCready.
Senators, we're voting.
Senator Blas, aye. Senator Espaldon, aye.
I hold your applause because I haven't announced the votes yet. Bill Number 35-33 COR received, let me count, 14 yea votes and one excused absence, unanimous So bill number thirty-five dash thirty-three C O R is duly passed by this body. Congratulations, Senator. Resolution number two dash thirty-three L.S.
Resolution number two dash thirty-three L.S., introduced by Michael F.Q. Sniklis, relative to respectfully requesting Congresswoman Madeline Z. Bertalio to introduce legislation requiring that a general election intervene between enactment of a law to vary the compensation of the governor, lieutenant-governor, and senators of the Guam Legislature and its implementation, consistent with the Twenty-Seventh Amendment to the U.S. Constitution.
Roll call.
Senator Tom Ada.
Yes.
Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada.
No.
Senator Tony Ada, nay. Senator Uggan. Senator Uggan, aye. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, nay. Vice Speaker Cruz.
Aye.
Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Espaldon. Senator Espaldon, aye. Senator McCready. Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Rispisho. Senator Rispisho, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, excused. Senator Sniklis.
Yes.
Senator Sniklis, aye. Senator Torres.
Yes.
Senator Torres, aye. Senator Underwood.
Yes.
Senator Underwood, aye. Speaker Wampat.
I'm good.
Speaker Wampat, aye. Senator Espaldon. Senator Espaldon, aye. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Morrison.
Aye.
Senator Morrison, aye.
Resolution number two dash thirty-three L.S. Received twelve yea votes, two nays, and one excused absence. Resolution number two dash thirty-three L.S. Is duly passed by this body. Senator Rispisho, you rec-- oh, we have the confirmation. One sec. Wait. On the nomination of Mr. Glenn Leon Guerrero to serve as the Director of the Department of Public Works, roll call.
Senator Tom Ada.
Glenn Leon Guerrero, the Director of Public Works.
Senator Tom Ada, aye. Senator Tony Ada.
Yes.
Senator Tony Ada, aye. Senator Uggan.
Yes.
Senator Uggan, aye. Senator Blas. Senator Blas, aye. Vice Speaker Cruz. Vice Speaker Cruz, aye. Senator Espaldon.
Yes.
Senator Espaldon, aye. Senator McCready.
Yes.
Senator McCready, aye. Senator Morrison. Senator Morrison, aye. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Munia Barnes, aye. Senator Rispisho. Senator Rispisho, aye. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Rodriguez, excused. Senator Sniklis. Senator Sniklis, aye. Senator Torres. Senator Torres, aye. Senator Underwood. Senator Underwood, aye. Speaker Wampat.
I'm good.
Speaker Wampat, aye.
On the appointment of Mr. Glenn Leon Guerrero to serve as the Director of the Department of Public Works, Mr. Leon Guerrero received fourteen yea votes and one excused absence, Mr. Glenn Leon Guerrero is duly confirmed by this body to serve as the Director of the Department of Public Works. On the nomination of Mr. Ryan F. Torres to serve as the Business Representative of the Guam Election Board, all in favor, please raise your hand. Mr. Ryan F. Torres received unanimous support and is duly confirmed by this body. On the nomination of Ms. Catherine C. Skro to serve as a member of the A.B. Wampat International Airport Authority Board of Directors, all in favor, please raise your hand. Ms. Catherine C. Skro received unanimous support and she is duly confirmed by this body to serve as the member of the A.B. Wampat International Airport Authority Board of Directors. Senator Rispisho, you recognize.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Having exhausted the session agenda, I move that we adjourn subject to the call of the Speaker.
On that motion, hearing no objections, it's ordered. We are adjourned subject to the call of the Speaker.